Welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 14. This is the monthly April meeting of the Burlington School Board. We'd like to call this meeting to order. We can begin with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would like to participate.
Oh, I don't have that up yet.
You don't have the flag?
I don't have the flag. Hold on, please. Let's just give a moment to make sure we have some attendees coming in. Give me a sec, please. Share screen.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Republic. For which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone, before we approve the agenda, does anyone have any items that they would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Will someone give me a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda? Commissioner Alwell? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carey? All right, any discussion? We will vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agenda is approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment.
Yep, so for public comment, you must be connected to the Zoom meeting in order to participate. You cannot participate via Facebook or YouTube. If you wish to speak and are connected via phone, hit star nine. If you wish to speak and are connected via computer or Zoom app, look for the raise hand icon. I'll see that you've raised your hand and call on you one by one. So we have three attendees. Oh, hi, Tom Flanagan. Has anyone wished to speak at public comment? Hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand via the Zoom app. All right, no public comment tonight.
All right, I will offer board reflections if anyone would like to speak at board reflections at this time. Commissioner Carey?
Yes, I just want to say briefly how much I appreciate the hard work and creative energy that's going into providing education of students in our district. I know that everyone is under stress in our society right now and it's amazing the transformation that's been made by the teachers and the students and the staff in Burlington School District. And I just can't say enough to express my appreciation for that. I also just want to thank Stephanie and Yao for the webinar that they put on this week about the continuity of education to give structure and expectations more clearly defined for students and faculty. I thought it was excellent. And I guess that's it. I can't say how much I appreciate the creative energy that goes into, that's been going into, providing all the things that our students need during these difficult times.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Anyone else? Okay, on behalf of the board, I'd like to echo those same sentiments to Superintendent O'Bang, Director Lavery, and I know Zee is also on the line here as well, and all those in central office who have been working tirelessly in that transition. And we reached our month mark yesterday, the March 13th, from the governor's announcement of the state of emergency. And I know you have not stopped. So thank you very much on behalf of all of us. We greatly appreciate the time and dedication and the effective communication. I followed it up with a chair's update that we'll do weekly. And so all of us are well informed. And if anyone has any questions, they know to reach out to the chair or board officers and reach out if they haven't already, you know, they can still do so with any questions that they have. So thank you again. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Sowers, a second. Commissioner Gulick. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. The consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you.
Next is this, thank you, welcome, Director Anderson Brown. Next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Will. And I will just, observation, I just had commissioners remember when you are voting to unmute, because the number of you said aye, but we couldn't hear you because you were muted. So it's on for the record. Thank you so much. And thank you for the kind words from all of you. I know I've heard from almost everyone in terms of feedback they've had from the community around what staff have been doing to support their students and family. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Carey specifically. And I like your representing the equal pay. Sure, there, Commissioner Gulick. So I do have an update for you, and I know you've been keeping up with the updates, but I do have some pieces, some of it you've heard already, but I think it's okay to hear again, and then I'll probably add some nuances in terms of pieces that you'd like to receive. First, let me start with the good news is that we did receive today, sorry, yesterday, days are going quickly, approval from the AOE regarding our plan. We had no sort of mitigating factors with our plan. They approved this straight out. And now we can start the work, but we do have until April 20th to modify any pieces to that. So we'll be looking to that. And I'll take this opportunity to thank Director Phillips for working with me to do the video conference. We've had really good response. And most likely we'll do another one as we get into the continuity of learning to address any issues that come up and get more specific and drill down to some of the other pieces. But I do have to say, all the work that's happening that you see put out by a district level that the whole district, everyone from parents to classroom teachers to property services staff are contributing to continue to move the district forward. And I'm really proud of what we've done, and I think we've done a really good job of maintaining some programming for our students and trying to support parents while during this difficult time. So I'll move on with that. So I want to start off, I did share, I've been sharing this week just to give people sort of the impact and flavor some of our demographic pieces that we have to consider as we move into the continuity of learning. And I've talked about our 19% of students are IEPs and 16% of students who are English learners and over 49%, almost 50% pre-reduced lunch. And prior to the school closures, we know we had 10% of our families that did not have internet access. So those are pieces that we have to sort of always consider in terms of the plans that we have. And also find a balance. And we get feedback from parents who think they're not getting enough work, and some parents that think they're getting too much work. And trying to find a good balance in order to do that. But I'm happy to say that this week, we kind of started the continuity of learning and I believe all school, all parents have had some communication from their principals or their teachers. And that's where they'll get the regular weekly input and a plan of action for the week. So the structure really lends itself well to parents being able to plan out their week and think about where they're going to have good breaks and how they can strategically motivate and continue to monitor their students. EL, just quickly, the EL teachers are sort of programming individually for those students, those limited English learners that we have, we're directly communicating with them directly. And we have support from our multilingual liaisons, connecting with families and having that before going. And we're working quite well so far, and we're hopeful to continue to provide that service as well, too. I'm going to say special ed. I do want to get a little more specific around special ed when we get to that section and speak a little bit about the work that they've done there. One piece that was challenging, there's been a struggle for superintendents across the state, thinking about the the AOE is requiring us to take attendance. And how do you take attendance? Remote learning when you're not specifically seeing students every day and, you know, and some students are delinquent and we're trying to find them out and make connections. But we've seemed to be able to find a good balance, and each school has a process and a structure, have a safety team to look after students they have not had contact with, and have a plan of action to reach out to those students and follow up to make sure. Our primary concern is about mental well-being. And, you know, if we don't see students for, you know, over a week or a period of time, that raises concerns in terms of what are they doing, where are they, and we're looking to reach out. We also have a good partnership with our Burlington Police Department and our SROs where we can deploy people to go out if we think that someone might be in jeopardy or dangerous. So far, all those mechanisms have worked in a positive way, and I'm hopeful that we continue to move in that direction. Had really good feedback after the video conference and update from parents around many of their questions have been answered in terms of continuity learning. I'm sure they'll have more questions as we get into it. But now they can go directly to their teachers or their principals now that we're getting, we've had our plan approved and we're going to get direct guidance from the AOE. And there'll be some modifications, I'm sure, as time goes through. But I do want to read you the expectations that I shared about parent expectations. Had concerns from parents around feeling a little overwhelmed in terms of what they need to do to support their students during this period in terms of level of teaching and monitoring. So these are the guidelines that I've shared with parents, and I hope they can follow them. It's around parent expectations. So parents are not expected to instruct or teach their students beyond their normal practice, right? So do what you would normally do. You're going to have great support from your teachers and the other sort of intervention teachers that we have in our schools. We're not asking parents to partner, we're asking parents to partner with their school to monitor students, right? Keep a focus on them in terms of how they're doing, well-being, and how they're doing academically. Continue to connect with your teachers at the appropriate time. Primary supports for parents, they can offer encouragement, help students to engage. So that's, I would ask parents to keep that front of mind in terms of how do you motivate your children during this time? How do you keep them engaged? And how do you support them through how they're getting social interaction with their friends through electronic means or some good physical distancing activities? So balance is the main thing. Expectation is that parents are following up with teachers and principals as needed. So if there's anything that you need at the school level, please go, attempt to go directly to your teacher. If not, then go to principal. Principals are in the triage mode where they know where all the resources centrally are to get supports in order to support students. We've had a number, even after last week, after the video conference, a couple of parents reached out to me and I said, well, that's more appropriate to principals. And within a matter of hours, principals were on it and responding and resolving. I have to say that all principals have communicated with their communities in terms of continuity learning. And you'll see regular communication every week in terms of what's happening at the school level and also continuous continuation with the teachers. Teachers will have, in each school, have office hours. So there'll be hours where parents can contact teachers as well. We're trying to have a process that's not overwhelming for teachers as well, too. We know that many teachers are already working hours into night. There is a paradigm shift, right? It's a normal person in terms of trying to move from the regular classroom setting to now this remote learning. So there's a bit of learning that happens for our staff as well, too. So please be patient. Teachers are working overtime in order to move into this new realm of remote learning. But there are times where we set out to middle schools twice a week, and at the high schools, there's three times a week you can look for your own students' teachers' times, and you can contact those teachers through a lot of different forms to ask questions or choose to go directly to them as well, too. One thing I do want to talk about is the platforms. I know that we've probably read a lot of material around Zoom and the use of Zoom and the hacking issues and Zoom bombing and all kinds of things. Some of it is exaggerated, but some of it is very real. We are not using Zoom for student engagement. The adult staff are using Zoom and other platforms to communicate back and forth. And they're adults, so they can manage that and figure out what's appropriate. But what we are doing is using platforms that we have our staff trained in Google. Google Hangouts, we use Unified Classroom at the high school level, and we're also using CSO. These are all educational applications for remote learning. And we have the, sorry, the contracts for these settings. And we also have staff who are trained to be able to support and to educate our other staff who are just learning how to use these platforms. So we figure if we can use those platforms, we can become experts in those platforms and we can share the strategy. Most people are familiar with Google, because we use Google quite a bit through our email, through our Gmail process and Google Docs and things like that, and our teams are familiar with that, so that'll be an easy. So don't fear around the Zoom piece, because Zoom is not being used for students because we know there was some confidentiality issues around that and potential breaches of cybersecurity for students. But the other platforms I mentioned have those securities in place, so we can continue with that. I've already talked about schedules for each school should have a schedule. And you can find around office hours for their teachers and be able to connect with their students with that. There is so much more, but I know you've been reading the updates, so I won't go into so much detail. But I do want to highlight, I'll try to highlight one particular group when I have the opportunity. And one I want to speak to is the Student Support Services, our special ed and other programs, the Student Support Services. That group in particular this time around. So I have to say that we've had some great responses from people outside of Burlington wanting to work in Burlington, become special educators. That's a good sign for our hiring season, that people are looking to come to Burlington to be special educators. So I'm sure we're always excited about that and we'll be able to get good staff, a staff that will retire and move on and be increase our capacity around that which is a good program. So our special educators, our SLPs, our psychologists, who all fall into Student Support Services, they're doing all kinds of work and working together. So they're reaching out to parents and students, engage ability and tolerance of online instruction. That's a little different, and it might be nuanced for special ed students with special education needs. We, as I mentioned before, we have 700 remote learning plans. That's besides the IEP plans. This is specifically get gauge to matching the IEPs with remote learning and how do we do that. And so our staff are, not only did they write them, but now they're revising them based on a continuity learning plan and the needs of our students. Our special educators and staff are meeting with general ed teachers, developing superior learning plans. So teachers are meeting, so they're still now having their teacher meetings. So I know that for our staff, the staff that I work with, they'll be looking forward to getting back to some normalcy so they don't get frequent calls from me throughout the day because it looks like we're having more contacts all day because there's so much more communication that needs to happen to learn how to work in this environment. But that's happening at the school level as well, too. Continuing to complete initial evaluations of IEPs and revise IEPs. We must do that because the federal laws have not been relaxed at this time. You think it's a pandemic and a state of emergency, they would give some latitude, but those areas have not been sort of relaxed. So we're still full on trying to make sure we meet all those, not trying, but we will be meeting all those compliance issues around the federal IEPs and areas like that. Use of special ed parent educators. We're using our special ed parent educators as well and targeting specific families that need supports. And you'll see that ramp up through the continuity of learning around that. And of course, all our staff are learning new skills, right? People are using the different online platforms for the first time, so there's some training that has to happen there, and they have to learn to utilize that. And then sometimes, some cases, training their students or parents to be able to communicate back and forth. At the same time, meeting all the regulations by OSAP, which is the Office of Special Education Programming at the federal level, and then of course, the Agency of Education. So those are some of the pieces that our Student Support Services are continuously working on. And I just want to share that because the amount of work that they've done in a short period of time and the attention to detail has been amazing. And I'm sure they're getting a little fatigue, but hopefully we get into a routine where things are somewhat normal, we can kind of figure out this remote learning piece. So that is a brief overview. I could continue to share more information, but I'll leave some time for some questions around things that board members may be wondering about. You have to unmute, Chair Will. Unmute.
Yes, thank you. Great. So if you would like to ask a follow-up question, I know there are a number of us, but you can raise your hand and I can, and Superintendent O'Bang or anyone else can ask if it's not directed at the superintendent or anyone else, that he can follow up with some questions. So if there's anyone at this time that would like any follow-up questions answered? I can start off with April break. What does April break looked, you know, for us, for you with central office? And is anyone working April break, or do we still deliver the meals? How does that?
Yeah, let's start with food first. I like food, so we will be offering food services, just as we're offering now during April break. We will also continue to offer essential workers childcare during that time. All the staff who normally work on April break will be working, so that means that Nate, Zee, and all the others who work at central office will be working during that time. And that's going to be an opportunity for us actually to review the first week of continuity learning to see how that went and prepare for when our students come back that following week. And so we're going to ask support from some of our staff who don't work normally, like our administrators and our instructional coaches. I'm sure they'll want to chime in on what the changes may be. But other than that, we will have office hours that are available to deal with what we normally deal with during the break as well.
Great, thank you. And then was there a date that you had thrown out, a May 8th or a May 15th to reevaluate?
Yeah, well, the state initially said May 8th was the date that they would make a decision on school, whether school closure continues or it ends. So I'm speculating, but based on what's happened, I could see that happen before May 8th. But that is the date that they put out that they will make a decision. So, I mean, they could change that as well, too. But, and why, that's a good question, because one thing I didn't mention, I know especially at the high school level, they're probably wondering about programs and things that could be canceled. Okay, we're not trying to get ahead of ourselves, so we're not canceling anything at this point. The only things we've kind of canceled are like major field trips outside of state or international trips, those type of things. But things like graduations and other ceremonies that would normally happen at the end of the year. Right now, I haven't given any sort of word to cancel those things. I mean, as we get closer, we'll know what the reality is. And right now, I know when I look across the country and talk to some colleagues, I mean, people are looking at virtual graduations and all kinds of creative things to do for students. So I'm sure we'll get to a point where we'll have a team looking at things to do with that as well, too. But we're really going to kind of wait to see what the state says, if we're going to be going back at any point or not. And then that'll kind of give us a signal in terms of what we need to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher, did you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Chair Will. Actually, I have two questions, Superintendent O'Bang. First is around, we always talk about closing the achievement gap and trying to make sure the gap doesn't start. And I was thinking about the 10% of families that don't have access to internet. So, you know, there are lots of families, how some discussions about people who want to do, you know, active live classrooms and compare our district to other districts. What's the strategy for our district for those families that don't have access to the internet when there's so much that's going on right now, programming curriculum-wise across the internet?
Yeah, that's a good question, too, because it gives me an opportunity to explain some things around technology as well. The, well, first, I'd say we've been pretty aggressive in working with some of the community partners and businesses to try to provide families who do not have internet access, free internet access during this period of time, and also families who do not have devices, devices as well, too. So we've been doing that from day one. So, and principals are getting that information, and we're trying to respond and to try to get people access when we can. At the same time, we know that we had to start off without people being able to access. So we do have hard copies. So we do develop hard copies, and those are delivered to, initially to the schools. They're at the boot sites, and as we get to the next release of continuing learning, then Director Phillips will decide whether we need to make that sort of, most likely shifts are decentralized where it comes from the school, so they can go directly from the school. They can pick it up at some location at the school and pick it up and be able to support that. But that's always in the back of our mind, knowing that we have a percentage of people who don't have direct access. And I know that I've personally been in contact with parents who didn't have laptop or internet access, and we've been able to do that within a matter of days. Get them something so they can communicate with their teachers at least to say, okay, this is the work that we have to do. But it's a continuous challenge, and one of the challenges is just identifying people, right? Making sure that we can often, principals and teachers may know who don't, but we don't always know. And sometimes people may be hesitant to come forward and say that, you know, we need support or help. But you realize that people do need that support, so we're trying to do that.
Okay, thank you. So my second question is around consistency across the district, and it's kind of a follow-up to last week's question. So now that we're moving into the continuity of learning, and you'll have next week to do, kind of assess where you are. What's the strategy for, what's the technique you're using to ensure that there is that consistency from classroom to classroom within a school or from school to school?
Yeah, that's a question that even without remote learning, it's always a challenge, right?
Yeah.
Right? No, seriously, the research shows that there's more difference between classroom to classroom than from school to school. So that's a continuous systemic challenge that we have in terms of trying to be consistent. But I think that having this remote learning has actually given us an opportunity to balance that playing field and be more consistent, because it's more scrutiny on exactly what we're doing, and we're working more loudly to prescribe the materials. And if we follow the structure that the AOE has given us, so one area we have to be consistent is around communications and routines. So our principals are meeting weekly around communications routines, both from the principals and meeting with their staffs and their leadership teams and what sort of communications that they're doing. Two, around structures and student success. Structures we're using, how do we have student success, whether it's even how do we support students who are have well-being issues or who need interventions? So we're meeting every week, the principals. I'm meeting with our systems leaders on Fridays to get a check-in, is where we are. And our curriculum department is working with our instructional coaches to continue to do that. And then the other big piece is around instruction and assessment, right? So in the plan, we have articulated how assessment can happen at each school. So the schools are now having conversations, and we're trying to ensure that it's similar at each school. So one school's not, you know, doing something drastically different than the other school and that there is a standard. So that's continuous work and then ensuring accessibility, that we have everyone access, that's the last sort of area. So following those four structures and holding everyone accountable in terms of this is our plan and how are you delivering within that plan will help us defend. And I think it's going to be probably a good thing for when this is over, to carry over in order to have that consistency across the system as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Haji?
Thanks for the update, Superintendent O'Bang. My question is regarding a point you made earlier on ELL support. And I was wondering, could you elaborate more on what types of support those students are getting as well as the families at this time? And how that's going to continue with the continuity of learning?
Right, so let me try to describe a little bit. I'll try to be more specific around what it can look like. So from K to five, so beginning students in our like step program, we'll have two classroom teachers in the program. We'll prepare activities along with our dedicated EL teachers, so they're still sort of working together, designing specifically for those specific students in reading and mathematics. So they'll have that. And then at the middle school, EL teachers will prepare and deliver most of the learning. So it's mostly the EL teachers are going to be doing that work with guidance from the director of EL. But those EL teachers are also meeting weekly with the general ed teachers and so collaborating around those pieces. And then at the high school level, similar as well, too. The EL teachers have their group of students, and they're working with those students directly in terms of what their needs are. They understand their needs already, and they're also using our liaisons to communicate when they need to with the families to get supports around that. And I think they're, I think they're well taken care of in terms of the connection that they have with their teachers already, so there's really direct support happening there. And our director of EL is communicating with their staff every So there's really direct support happening there. And our director of EL is communicating with their staff every week to make sure if there are anyone falling through the cracks. Even students that we don't see, not connecting with online for some reason. Then we're deploying our liaisons to make some contact to find out, you know, why aren't they connecting with their teacher? What's going on? Is it just a language issue? Or is it just that we're just not being able to find them to connect with the school? Hope that helps there. Give you some clarification. Thank you.
Chair Wall, can I be recognized?
Yes, Commissioner Avancheck and then Commissioner Awal. And then we'll time bound this for probably seven more minutes.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions, but just to add to Commissioner Haji's comment about EL students and families. We recently received from Superintendent Obang, I think it was a weekly update in where he discussed how the multilingual liaisons are working overtime. And that's also what we talked about in my, I was part of the Hunt PTO meeting yesterday evening. And Principal Scheit talked about that and how they're working 50, 60 hours a week. And I believe the district has 11 multilingual liaisons. So we're going to see if the Unified PTO can get money together to give to that group of helpers. But I just wanted to ask the superintendent just about like attendance. How are you going to deal with challenges with attendance? Like, I think at Hunt, they're taking attendance on Wednesdays and Fridays. I believe through Google meets. And just by grade level, how is that going to differ? Like if K through two doesn't even have a computer, you know, how do you even take attendance? And then you mentioned safety teams. And so how do we go, how do we find out who's on, which safety team at which school? And, and I'll have a follow-up question after this.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a challenge that we've been working on. How do you do attendance in remote learning? And each school has, has a structure where they have, I, I use, I use safety team because I know one school I was talking, they called it their safety team. And they sort of bring students that they're feeling in jeopardy, that haven't seen or that haven't had contact with. And then they're, they reach out from the, from the team or by the principal. We also have other social services workers in our district that we can also use. And we also have our SROs that we can use. But for the most part, from what I heard from principals, because I asked that same question you asked directly about a week ago. Asked if they needed another resource. They said they were fine because they were dealing with it within their, their teams and looking after those kids. And the way they kind of monitor attendance is through whether texts back and forth, phone calls, any video conferences, any communication with those students. At the primary level, the pre-K to two, it's more about connecting with the families, the parents, not the kids, right?
Right.
Pre-K kids aren't, well, some of them might be able to get on and do that. But it's about the families, connecting with the families and how you're doing. And things are well. And we're able to keep track of that. We're also offering, when we do those contacts, I think it was one of the updates, mental health and, and social supports, right? So people who might not be feeling that well at this time. And I know that we've had a few situations where parents, you know, some, many people are laid off during this time. They're dealing with a lot of stress and, and they have to, they have to now address their student needs. And so we've been able to look at some of our community partners who do social services and they can recommend. So they're available to do that kind of work as well, too. So we're really trying to do the wraparound and start with the wellness first before the, even the academic piece. But that's what I believe is most important at this time.
That sounds great. Thanks for explaining that. My other question was just to do with food. I heard that the number of meals requested or desired went, recently went from like 1,600 to 33,200. And how does Doug Davis handle that? And then if you have any suggestions for us and community members of how we could help out in, you know, any, any way?
Yeah, that, it did skyrocket and half of that food was probably meat. So I told you I like food. So, no, we actually went from a thousand a day to six, to over 1,600 meals a day. So we're getting a great res- and it's open to anyone under 18. And one of the things Doug and his team are looking at are hot meals, sort of for dinners and things that people can take and heat up. And over the weekend when people are out. So at the beginning of this process, we did some work with the state and also the federal where we have funds in order to subsidize the food project dollars. And we are tracking any excess of dollars that, that is specifically COVID-19 to, to build back to the state if, if we need to. But right now, we're in good shape around that. And we'll give you some updates later on about some of the financial pieces. Probably in May, we'll probably give you an update on finances, how we're doing. But we're doing, we're doing okay right now in terms of doing that. But we are not going to minimize the food service at all. You know, on the Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that's one of the needs, right, in terms of nutrition? So we want to make sure that our kids are fed and no one's going hungry during this period of time. So we won't spend any expense on that. And I, food services staff are working a shift. They're shifting like some, some half a day, some in the afternoon, so we can continue to utilize them. My only concern is if they get burnt out and we start losing people, then it'll be a challenge because our numbers keep going up in terms of food. Right? So that's where we are. But we will be continuing to do during the April break. And normally they would have a break, those staff would be off, but they're going to continue to work and we are going to pay them for during that time period. So I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. Commissioner Awal?
Mute, mute, unmute.
I didn't need, I was just telling you I couldn't hear you.
And last question. Yeah, thank you for touching upon that. And great questions, Commissioner Avancheck and Commissioner Haji. Thank you. The finance piece, I did send around to the board and we can discuss this later as we edit, as it becomes pertinent to what you were saying and follow up with us. The extensive legislative document about the ed funding. So they are the one that our legal counsel, Joe McNeil, had sent us. And so our commissioners will read that and digest it and then, you know, wait when the time is appropriate. You know, based on Director Labrie and yours, more information. So I know that that came up from a number of commissioners from constituents who had asked how we, how the district was affording the, the free meals for, throughout the community. And you explained it to us. So thank you for that. And then as we move forward, any, the, the financial impact of all of this with our district, I know that'll be a, a meeting agenda somewhere down the line as well.
Yeah. So let me just sort of clarify, that document received was a draft document. So it's a draft document. So it hasn't been, been legislated or approved or anything. But I'll just to give you some insight of what we, but we will come back probably in the May meeting to do an overview of finances to reassure you where we are. And the governor has said that they're going to pay for everything. So, you know, but right now, I think we're in pretty good shape, even with, even within our own budget guidelines. We'll give you an update at a proper time as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our proposed policy updates. Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Wick.
Thank you, Chair Wall. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see this document? Oops, did that work? So this is our annual work plan, AKA our calendar. So we came out with this, the version two last year. We got some feedback over the last few months. The big changes, I'm just going to highlight, is that Director Phillips and Prusak have asked that we shift the report on the 1.0 global ends and the 1.1 reducing disparities and have that reported in September. So that is for the prior year, they'll have all that data. And then in February. That's a better timing of when the data is available. And we are still looking to get that report. I think we're talking about May is to look at that data for this year. The other thing we did is try and clear out January. We had, because we realized that's going to be like budget season, hardcore budget, finalize the budget. So we tried to clear that out. We also made some minor tweaks up here to the top right. Tried to move the school calendar earlier because people want to know when school is going to start so that they can do their summer planning. And we also added in training for new board members. So questions, comments? Go, so I can see everybody. Jeannie?
We love how organized this is, Mike. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if this at, at some point is going to become a working document that has links to all of these things. There's so much potential for this to be really effective.
Good thought.
I will help if you need help with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Polly?
Hi. Um, I was just wondering what the admin feedback was on having the school calendar determined in April. Like, are they okay with that? Are they comfortable with that? Are there questions around testing and those kinds of schedules?
That's me, right?
So, I can't even see where.
I'm here. Can you see me now?
Yeah.
Um, yes, the, see, there's a process for the calendar. It's not just, it's not just Burlington. We first have to go through the sort of regional process in Chittman County superintendents. And then we have to look at potential waivers if the days don't line up before we bring it to, to the board. The last couple of years, we've been able to bring it in April because we've been able to get everything done in time. So April, May is a good time to have it done. I know people want to know. And I think this year I was able to send a message out about the, people want to know, I think it was the start of school before the calendar. So then people knew that at least, that that was already decided. So those are some of the big pieces. But the late April, early May is probably the best timing that ensures that it's embedded through all the pieces. And if we have to have any waivers in Burlington, we can send it to the AOE and have their prompt response and be able to come to the board and say, this is what we've got. And then have the final say on that. So I think as long as you're flexible on that, depending on what's happening during the course of the year, if it's late April or early May, then it should work.
And we, we, in our past practice has been that we're using this and we set the, you know, the officers meet. But really, it's the chair, and the chair consults with the officers and Superintendent Obang to set the agenda. And we've always moved stuff around when, when necessary, you know, when like Nate is late on his audit and that kind of thing.
Never, right Nate?
Any other questions, comments, concerns? So this is not an official policy. So I don't think we need to bring this back for a second reading. So Chair Wall, are you okay if we vote on this right now?
Yes.
Okay. So I move to accept this as the updated, Board's updated annual work plan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For 2021?
So I'm, I would say starting next month, going forward. I don't.
I don't know if you can do that because I have to look at the details, but it's next month. And there's a change in policies that would have happened in the fall, but now in the spring. That would be problematic for staff.
It's just the, you mean, you mean like, you're looking at like 2.6 and 2.8 in June?
Yeah, I'm just being general in terms of this change is a movement of, of policies, presentations. It, it does create a problem in terms, because we plan out the year, right? So I would take this, I would take the last one and I would look at it throughout the course of the year and assign a proper stop and say, this is the month we're doing it. So start this work, look at that work. So if there was a, if there is a presentation that was due in the fall, I would guess, and now it's due next month, that would be a challenge for.
The, the, so I get what you're saying. The only thing that's changed in that way that's going earlier is the monitoring reports for 2.6, emergency superintendent succession and 2.8 communication support to the board. Do you feel like you cannot, you and the staff can't be ready to present those in June?
Well, we already presented it this fall.
You did it in September?
I did it in September.
Okay.
Not going to change for the next few months.
So do you feel that, and we can discuss that with the chair to see if we're going to present that again, that monitoring report. But do you feel that it, there's anything else on the, on the calendar that would present a difficulty, a challenge to staff to accepting this as the calendar starting next month?
Well, the only thing I see, like, I think the planning and budgeting, I think, I think we've done that one already. And they can sign in on that. I mean, those are ones we've done already in the fall. That's something that, the change in cycle, right? If you change in a cycle midway, we've done that presentation already now for, we've done emergency superintendent succession. We've done communication to the board. That all happened in the fall. So you're changing, so that means it's happened twice.
I understand what you're saying about 2.6 and 2.8. And I'd say we can, we can have a conversation outside of this about not presenting that. But that, those two and the 1.0 and 1.1 are the only ones that have changed for, in terms of superintendent monitoring reports.
2.4 is not for May.
2.4 has been in May. That has not changed.
Okay, if it hasn't changed, then that's fine then.
Okay.
I'm just, yeah.
So there is a motion on the table.
All right. Any, uh, did you get a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wick with a second? Any discussion? All right. Seeing done, seeing none. Commissioner Fisher, do you want to restate your motion?
So I move to accept the version 2.1 draft as the Board's annual work plan starting next month.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, then the motion carries. So 2.1 is a draft.
Thank you. All right, next up is policy 3.1, monitoring superintendent performance. We had a discussion at a board meeting a couple of months ago about when the superintendent presents, what do we do? Do we vote to accept it? Can we ask him to revise it? So this is a response to that. I did some research, found some stuff on Carver's site. He's the one who came up with policy governance. And also looked at some other districts like Bellingham, Washington that we usually refer to. And the vast majority all vote on the monitoring report. So Jeff and I looked at this in our last meeting and what we saw is, so what we tried to clarify is for every internal report, and that's when the superintendent does it, that we will, I'm sorry, for every report. So it could be the superintendent providing the report, an external report. So that's like the auditors coming in. Or even the board can do its, its own report, which I don't think that we have done. That we will either, there's a couple of choices, approve the monitoring report or declare the superintendent as partially in compliance. Declare the superintendent as not in compliance or for internal reports. So what we've done before is say, hey Superintendent Obang, could you go back and revise this in, in this way? So I'll just pause and open up for questions. Superintendent Obang?
Thank you. The only thing I would say is before you bring it back for a second reading, I think this would be, this is a good one to have a discussion with your new superintendent before you approve it. Because you want to make sure there's some alignment around, agreement around the work in here. And also aligned with the contractual agreement around performance and evaluation. So that's, that would be my only recommendation that I think you probably want to have. So that's, that would be my only recommendation, that I think you probably want to have the new superintendent involved in this conversation before you finalize where you go with it.
Thank you. Monica?
I guess I'm wondering, did you, it looks like good work to me and it would really take out the confusion as to when we're presented with the monitoring report as to, do we approve it, do we not? And then you all know, we've had some back and forth on this. But I'm also wondering, did you make these additions in a public policy and governance committee meeting?
We did.
Okay. Before the COVID.
Yeah, it was like March, March 10th, I think.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so Jeff and I will take this back to policy and governance and take the input and bring it back for a second reading.
Great. And following up, let me just unmute. And following up on Superintendent Obang's guidance as well, we will communicate as well with the incoming superintendent and, and I'll work with policy governance as well on that. So thank you for that. All right. That is it. Next on the agenda is adjournment. So my closing remarks are, next week's meeting, April 21st, the Tuesday, will be a longer meeting. We have some, we need to go through a number of reports and resource plans with the board. So I just wanted everyone to be prepared and acknowledge that next week's meeting will be longer, but I'm thrilled to adjourn this meeting before seven o'clock tonight, unless there's anything else anyone would, would like to ask a question about or, or follow up. Commissioner Awal?
Yes. I just wanted to tell Polly and Adam that I have two copies of these. You can each have one. It's the manual from the Vermont School Boards Association. So I can leave it on my front porch or I can call you if I'm in town and you can tell me where you live and I can drop it at your front porch, but you can read them. It's.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Awal and Superintendent Obang. And also I know Superintendent Obang, I'm not sure if you're aware, Commissioner Fisher is managing board training, the first of, I think, two, to, for Commissioner Haji, Commissioner Vanderputen, Commissioner Sowers and Commissioner Walz this Thursday. So thank you for that, Commissioner Awal. Superintendent Obang?
That's great. I, I believe you can get those essential work that Kathy just talked about electronically from BSBA.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Avancheck?
Hi, sorry, since I'm not involved in planning the meetings, I guess I'm just curious because this meeting is ending by seven and then next week looks like we have at least three heavy reports to deal with. So I guess I'm just wondering how, why it ended up that way.
We needed more time with one of our items and we had scheduled it accordingly, so based on person, available personnel.
Okay, that's what I thought. Or our council, probably too. Thank you.
And a reminder, tomorrow night, 5:30, BCOC will be having our meeting on Zoom if anyone wants to participate. Again, you'll, you receive that document about avenues of funding. And we also got another document today, a lengthy one from Black River Design, which we'll be bringing up tomorrow. So those of you that can join or your schedule allows, this will, these are instrumental meetings with regards to the future of our, of VHS BTC campus. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Commissioner Avancheck and a second, Commissioner Awal. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Any abstentions? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.